All right. Good evening. This is the September 4 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Hope you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody who wants to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda, is welcome to do so. We did have a signup sheet out in the entryway and nobody did sign up. I just want to make sure no one got in.
Oh, I did lose the signup sheet. I'm so sorry.
Did you want to speak during open forum?
I could share something.
Yeah, if you would like to do that, this is the time to do that. If you want to just go up to the front here and state your name and address for the record.
Okay.
And share with us.
You've never done this.
No, you're okay.
Going to sit here?
Right where the microphone is, so people can hear you.
Fancy.
Yeah, don't worry.
Oh my gosh, guys. Now I'm really nervous. First, I just wanted to say how thankful I was. I thought the city did a great job of, after the storm.
Can I get you to do one thing for me first? Just so we have you on the record. We just need your name and address.
Oh, you want to know who I am?
Yep.
My name is Beth Sauter, and I live off of 84th Street, right there on the path of Hamlet Park.
Okay.
And did an amazing job of picking up, and I just have been really, really impressed. We have lived here in Minnesota for the last two and a half years, here in Cottage Grove. We used to live in Wisconsin. So I'm really, really enjoying Cottage Grove. And so many people have had it so much worse than we did with the storm. It's, you know, the stories we're hearing as people are walking by on that path, our house is just houses and electricity and stuff. So I have a small problem, but I kind of feel like it's really a big problem that maybe we could address as a community. We live right on the path and along our side yard, we have wires that are community wires. We don't use most of those services that are running past my house. A big tree of ours went down. It snapped the electrical. They came out and fixed that. But when we cut, and because it's our tree, when we cut the tree, those three wires bounced back up. They didn't break, and we still have internet service, which everybody, the internet people were really surprised. Well, our problem is they're only like this high off the ground. But my biggest problem is I have now devoted four and a half hours of trying to find out who those wires belong to.
Okay.
I, when I called the city, they said, oh, that's my responsibility. I'm like, but where do I begin? Who services Cottage Grove? As a person living next to these, I have no idea who owns those wires. And that was my job to figure that out. And the only way I've been able to piece some of it together, and I'm not even done, was the gentlemen that have come out to fix, Xfinity has been out, and obviously the electric company, otherwise people wouldn't have power. But I still have two cables that now, when I walk through my yard, will take me out. I don't know who those are. And I'm left to figure out who those belong to. I have kind of pieced together with what these gentlemen have said, but I have spent four hours on hold or with people online trying to track down who belongs to these wires.
All right, so I'll just...
That sounds so frustrating.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, when they told me it was my responsibility, I was like...
I think we'll be able to help you with that. I'm going to turn it over real quick to our city administrator, Jennifer Levitt, because you're not the first one that we've had these conversations with.
Oh, good. So it's on your list, and it's happening. That's what I wanted to make sure of.
Your exact address?
I live at 7119 84th Street South.
I know right where you are.
Yeah, it's right where the path ends, right by the bridge.
I know right where it is.
Yeah. So, and like I said, I've been on hold today. I got transferred from a company I thought maybe was them to an insurance company. After I waited 55 minutes and then we got through all theirs, after another 20 minutes, I was to an insurance company because they thought I wanted to file an insurance claim.
No.
So anyways, I just thought it might help other people.
Glad you came.
As we have wires everywhere.
I'm going to let our administrator speak. Thank you for letting us know.
Okay, just that's what I...
And then we have your info, obviously, now, so we can work with you on that. So, Jennifer?
Well, Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate the resident bringing that to our attention. Those private utilities are sometimes a difficult thing to sort out. And so we would be happy to look into that with our private utility contacts to see if we can find the entity responsible for those. So when residents do have those challenges, sometimes, you know, if you have a provider, sometimes it's easy to look at a bill and know who it is. In this case, it's clearly not directly related to that. So we will hunt down that private utility and get that addressed. So if other residents have those issues, it's helpful for us to know where they're at specifically, so we can work with the private utilities. We can take care of that.
Now, Jennifer, just for that, do you want them to call? And I'm looking back at Ryan. Do you want them to call Public Works, or do you want them to call City Hall?
Public Works.
Okay.
That's where I started.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll help with that, then, going forward.
You know, it's one of those things. Not everybody knows all the steps.
Right.
I appreciate you guys saying.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it forward. And rest assured, you're not the only one.
No.
We've heard from several residents.
After this storm, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got her. You got her. Anybody else at this point? All right, I'll go ahead and close. Open forum. And I'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Second.
Who wants it?
Take, take.
You get like tied. Made a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Garza. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next is six was presentations. We do have two this evening. I believe one is on the screen in front of us, and I did ask Councilmember Thede if he would like to make the, or read the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, and then we'll look for a motion to second to approve. So Councilmember Thede, go ahead and you can read the proclamation.
All right. So whereas the United States of America is a nation built by the contributions of people from diverse backgrounds, and the Hispanic community has played a vital role in shaping our country's history, culture, and achievements, and whereas that Hispanic community has had a profound influence on our country through the strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, and they have enhanced and shaped our national heritage with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of our community, their community, and whereas the period from September 15th to October 15th is designated as National Hispanic Heritage Month to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and whereas this month-long celebration begins on September 15th, a significant date that marks the independence anniversaries of five Latin American countries: Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, and includes Mexico's Independence Day on September 16th and Chile's Independence Day on September 18th. And whereas we recognize and honor the many ways that Hispanics have enriched the fabric of our society while also redirecting ourselves to address, rededicating ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunity that many still face, and whereas the city of Cottage Grove is proud to honor the history and contributions of Hispanics in our community and throughout our state and our nation, now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month, passes Fourth Day of September, 2024.
All right. So thank you, Councilmember Thede, for reading the proclamation. And at this point, would you like to make that motion to accept the motion?
I will move that we make that motion that this September 15th through October 15th, 2024, is Hispanic Heritage Month.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Councilmember Thede. Next on presentations, we have an exciting event that's going to be, well, actually two, actually, exciting events on the same day that are coming up, which is the Cottage Grove Food Truck Festival and the Dowdell. And we're getting an update. And I believe we're going to start with Gretchen Larson, who is our economic development director, is going to talk to us a little bit about the Dowdell puzzle update.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Happy to be here tonight. Where am I at? There's my bar. The space bar helps. So we're going to talk just a little bit about the Dowdell unveiling, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Jamie Mann, and she's going to tell you about the food truck festival, and then staff will stand by for questions at the end. So the Dowdell unveiling event is going to take place on September the 14th, which is a Saturday, at Cottage Grove Middle School. The doors are going to open at 8:00 a.m. to the special guests who will be speaking in the program and the media. Then the doors will open to all the guests at 8:30 a.m., and the attendees will be welcomed by the Park High School marching band. And then the Park High School Choir will sing the National Anthem. And we have some copies of, on the screen, of the marketing efforts that are behind the unveiling. Next, the puzzles that are a part of the program will be for sale at Cottage Grove Middle School until about 11:00 a.m. So the program will end around 10-ish, 10:15, and then puzzles will be for sale in the lobby. We have 500-piece puzzles at $28, and 1,000-piece puzzles at $30, and that includes tax. So that's the price for the puzzles. After the unveiling, then the artist, Eric Dowdell, will proceed to the food truck festival. As a part of the marketing efforts, the communications team had a children's coloring contest, and that insert was, as you can see on the screen, was put in the August Cottage Grove reports. As of today, we actually, which was the deadline, we have 57 entries. So it was super cute to see all the little kids coming in, holding their pictures. And then Eric will present the top five finalists with a city medallion, and that'll be on the stage at the food truck festival at 12:00 noon. And as another part of the marketing effort, there's going to be a seven-foot-tall coloring activity of the actual black and white rendering of the painting, and it's a fun, interactive activity for the food truck festival attendees and a way to just draw more people to the booth potentially while Eric is still there. And with that, I will turn it over to Jamie.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Jamie.
Hello, Mayor, members of council. I am pleased to be here tonight to present information on our second annual Discover Cottage Grove, Cottage Grove Food Truck Festival. So the event this year takes place again at Kingston Park. It is Saturday, September 14th. It runs 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We did add an extra hour on to the end of the event time because we heard from vendors last year that we missed an hour of dinner rush time. So we accommodated their request this year, so we added an extra hour at the end. Will be ending at 7:00 p.m. This year, we have a lot of familiar things happening, and then a couple new things that we've added as well, including the Dowdell puzzle sales. So starting with food trucks. Our goal this year is 40 food trucks. Right now, I have 35 confirmed food trucks. That means their payment is in, all their paperwork is done. I have five that are at some point in the paperwork process, so we have hit our 40. Depending on spacing, I do have six on a waitlist as well, so we may be able to add just a few more food trucks to the list. But we will have a full house of food trucks this year, and you can see everybody coming on the screen. They're also updated on our Facebook event, so we've tagged them all on a post in our Facebook event, so their followers see that they're a part of the event as well. This year, we also pushed sponsorships a great deal more than last year. We do... We do have eleven total sponsors this year, which is fantastic. Uh, the sponsorships help cover some of the costs of the event, like the bounce houses and the porta-potties and the tents and, um, Facebook advertising and things like that, so we have a great lineup of sponsors this year. Uh, they will be on signage throughout the event, depending on what level they are. Um, we do have shirts that the volunteers are going to be wearing as well that have the gold and platinum sponsors on it as well, um, and you'll see those in just a minute. New this year, we are adding a marketplace, so our goal was ten vendors because we weren't quite sure how much interest we'd have. Uh, right now, we are at ten, but those are just confirmed, so meaning they've paid their fee, um, they've done all their paperwork. We do have another four in the process of finishing their paperwork, or we're waiting on their payment, so in the next ten days, they have time to get that into us. So we're hoping to end with about fourteen vendors, which will be right along the path that goes from where the food truck festival is to the north parking lot, um, similar to where Strawberry Fest holds theirs. Uh, also this year, we have some great entertainment for guests that are visiting the event. Uh, we have kids' activities, so we'll have a couple bounce houses there again this year that'll be staffed by a few recreation staff members. Strawberry Fest ambassadors are going to be there this year again. Uh, they'll be there from eleven to four, so not quite the whole event, but they are hosting carnival games for kids again this year. Uh, we also have some great live music, so Basic and Boring is opening the day for us. Um, when they take a break at noon, Dowdell, Eric Dowdell will be up on stage for, um, the coloring contest finalists. Uh, then Liv McNair will come on at three thirty and kind of open for Haley James. She's one of Haley's friends, and then Haley James is our headliner for the event, and we're really excited that she's joining us this year. Uh, we also have the beer gardens. The Cottage Grove Lions Club is hosting the beer gardens for us again this year, so we're glad they're back. We are able to extend our beer gardens out into the grass a little bit. Part, the parks team is going to kind of snow fence off a larger area of the grass so people can take their beer and go sit in the grass and listen to the music, so we are excited that we get a little more space for people to kind of mingle this year. And then Discover Cottage Grove will have a booth, like we did last year. We'll be staffing it from ten thirty to seven PM. Um, on the screen, you can see the shirts that our volunteers will be wearing. On the back, we'll have the sponsors as well. Um, come join our booth, visit us, um, talk to people as they come up and see us, and we'd like to invite you to stop by the booth. And with that, Gretchen and I would be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Well, first of all, just I'll say, and then I'll open it up for any council comments is, you know, in both cases, it's kind of cool. We're going to start off with this unveiling, and you had a little teaser on the side there on the one poster, the one sign that shows what the, the puzzle looks like and all the history of Cottage Grove, which is pretty amazing, uh, and the connections to the community that go way, way back, so, including up to current, current days, but, uh, so very, that's been fun, uh, to kind of go through that, or the council has been having, along with you, staff have been having a great time, uh, figuring out what should be in the puzzle, should be, or how do you, how do you fit everything, and then he did an amazing job putting it all together. You can tell the guy's an expert at doing this, uh, within the, the other communities. And then, of course, um, the food truck festival, you know, amazing job, uh, up to forty food trucks. Last year, the food trucks, it was long lines last year at those food trucks, and it was a gorgeous day, so we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. Um, but, uh, this is almost a kind of like a Strawberry Festival one-day event, if you will, uh, in Cottage Grove, so come and enjoy. I would just tell the public, come and enjoy, check out the puzzle if you want, buy a puzzle, great gifts, you know, the whole nine yards, and then go over to the food, uh, check out all the food trucks that you're going to have and the vendors and great music and, you know, grab a drink if you want at the Lions Beer Garden. So, uh, looking forward to this amazing event, uh, in just a couple weeks. So, uh, council and me, comments that you would like to make? Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Really, all I want to say to Gretchen and Jamie and the team behind them is a hearty thank you. Uh, I, I don't think the public really knows how much time, energy, and effort have gone into coordinating these events. The Dowdell Puzzle Event in and of itself is a really big event, and then to find a combination with the food truck festival and create that synergy, um, that was a heavy lift, and, uh, it's not like you have, you know, a thousand people around you to, to help you out, so I just want to thank you. Um, I, I know, uh, from kind of back here how much you all have been working on this for months and months and months. The food truck festival in, in and of itself, um, Jamie has been absolutely the tip of the spear on that, and, uh, just every day seems like she's really working on making sure that that event is, uh, as awesome as we all want it to be. So, um, I'll look to my colleague, uh, Councilmember Thede, to make sure that we get a good weather prediction like he does for Strawberry Fest each year.
Except this year.
Yeah, but we, you're allowed once in a while, it's okay. Uh, but, um, we really hope we have a good weather day, uh, and our Cottage Grove Lions Club, of which I'm the president, is so proud to be associated with the food truck festival, and we're so eager to see how this year is different from last year. You know, year two, you take all those learnings from year one and you try to apply those. Um, but I'll tell you what, uh, I, I was at the One Family Festival over the weekend at Kingston Park, and, um, um, Councilmember Garza and Councilmember Cambada were there as well, and they had twenty-eight food trucks, and it looked big. So forty? Wow, that is going to be just unbelievable. Um, so I hope people come in droves, and I hope they come hungry, and thank you very much for all that you've done to put this together. It's going to be a pretty special day.
Fantastic. Awesome. Thank you both again, uh, from all this, oh, I guess, Councilmember Thede has something you want to add?
So just out of curiosity, and, and I, I don't know if I saw anything in terms of obviously parking and things like that, so we're still going to kind of promote the, the, uh, the school lots and so forth to, for, for parking, and, and then obviously the north lot is, is, doesn't going to, and going to have a carnival there, so that's open for parking?
Uh, Mayor, members of council, uh, we're actually blocking off the north parking lot for vendors and volunteers this year, um, so it will be closed similar to Strawberry Festival.
Okay.
Um, we will have the streets. Um, we're going to do some additional handicap parking in the west lot so that, um, those needing accessible access can have that along the sidewalk, and then we do have, um, the elementary school parking lot as well.
Right, okay. All right, good, thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, looking forward to that. You're talking about all those food trucks, I'm really hungry right now. All right, uh, next on our agenda is consent. Uh, councilors, anything that you would like to pull off consent for discussion?
No.
All right.
Move consent.
All right, so we have a motion to move consent by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. So if anybody was interested or here for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have been approved. Uh, next is eight is approved dispersment, which is paying the bills.
Move to approved dispersments?
No, second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada, second by Councilmember Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next is public hearings. There is none this evening. Bit awards are on this evening, and on our regular agenda, we do have one item this evening, which is adopting the preliminary property tax levy, and Brenda Melanowski, uh, who's our finance director, is going to walk us through this. Uh, I'll just say for the public, we've been doing this since April.
January.
I was going to say technically January, but yes, as we've kind of finally got to the end here, so, uh, thank you, and, uh, you can walk us through the, the proposal as it is.
Mayor and city council, um, as the mayor had alluded to, yes, we have been working on, on our budget and the preliminary property tax levy that's in front of you this evening. Uh, we started in January, so quarter one, um, and so on the screen is that calendar that we've been utilizing throughout the year. Uh, quarter two, uh, council, you gave direction to city staff on budget direction. We took that back to our budget teams, uh, and they prepared budget requests based on that direction, and so my thanks to city council on all the, uh, hard work and effort that you have done throughout the year on this budget process, um, and thank you to our department directors too, and the, all the staff behind the scenes, uh, that is working on the budget throughout the year. So thank you, everyone. Um, quarter three, uh, we did, uh, three budget workshops, so city council, we had three budget workshops, two in July, uh, one, uh, just last week, uh, where you looked at every budget request, the impacts to the property tax levy, uh, the impacts to our community on those requests, on those needs. Um, and here we are tonight on September fourth, um, asking you to consider adoption of the preliminary property tax levy. It doesn't stop tonight, though, as you can see on the screen. Um, so we will certify that to the county and will continue through the process, um, until we come back to you in December, uh, for that final property tax levy adoption. Uh, so your action tonight is to adopt a preliminary property tax levy for the city of Cottage Grove. Uh, we will certify that to Washington County. Washington County will take our preliminary property tax levy and the preliminary property tax levy of the other taxing jurisdictions, uh, that are in our communities, so the school district and the county, and they will prepare individual property tax notices. They will mail those to each taxpayer, uh, here in our community, and they will then know, based on this preliminary property tax levy, the impact, the amount they'll pay in property taxes in twenty twenty-five, uh, based on that. Also, in that notice, uh, they will, uh, receive notice of when each taxing jurisdiction, including the city of Cottage Grove, will hold a public meeting to discuss the budget and the property tax levy. Here in Cottage Grove, we'll do that on December fourth, um, at seven o'clock, right here in city council chambers. At that same time, city council, you will adopt that preliminary property tax levy. Uh, something to remember for tonight, you're setting your maximum levy. When we come in front of you in December, uh, we cannot increase the amount of the property tax levy that you adopt tonight, so it's your maximum property tax levy is what you're setting tonight. Uh, you can, uh, come in lower in December, but you can't increase it. Um, accomplishments, um, that we have been able to accomplish as part of this budget process in this property tax levy is to continue to provide, uh, that same exceptional level of city services that we provide to our community, whether that's our police services, our fire services, our public work services, including, uh, snow plowings, uh, forestry services, uh, parks and recreation amenities. We are able to provide those. Uh, we're demonstrating stewardship of our capital assets by including the replacement of a capital equipment in our plan and city infrastructure, so we have identified, uh, equipment replacement that needs to be replaced, uh, in our financial management plan, and then city infrastructure in our, uh, capital improvement plan or our CIP, and so we've included that, uh, in our city budget. Uh, we continue to be that employer of choice, uh, through this budget process, and we're providing managed growth, uh, in staffing positions needed for our growing community by including some new positions in the twenty twenty-five budget. Not every position that was requested was funded, but a large portion were able to be funded. Uh, we're also, uh, meeting our debt service requirements, so the property tax levy that's in front of you, uh, does have some debt service. That means for debt that we've, um, issued in the past to do projects such as pavement management or building our central fire station, uh, we borrowed, uh, to do those projects, and so now we have principal and interest, no different than a mortgage on a home, um, that we need to pay in the future, and so we're including those requirements that are required for twenty twenty-five. Uh, that's important for our bond rating. We hold that triple-A bond rating with S and P Global, um, by funding that debt service, we're able to show evidence to S and P that we're able to manage our debt in the city. Um, and for the first time, um, in the history of Cottage Grove, we are doing an HRA levy. It's a separate levy, um, than the levy that you're adopting tonight, uh, for transparency for our ta- taxpayer, so that it'll be a separate line on their property tax bill. It'll say Cottage Grove HRA, and they will know how much that they're paying in city property taxes that are going for housing and redevelopment activities. In the past, it's been included in the city of Cottage Grove line item on their property tax statement, and so we're doing this for transparency. Um, and then we're maintaining our fund balance target of our general fund. Our general fund fund balance policy states that at the end of the year, we'll have forty-five to fifty-five percent, um, of assigned fund balance at year end, um, of our next year's budget, and so we need to have that range, and the reason that we need that forty-five to fifty-five percent designation at year end is we do not receive our first property tax settlement until July, so we are paying bills for the first, uh, six months of the year, whether we're paying vendors or employees or other, uh, city services, and we don't have that inflow of cash until July, so we need that, that buffer until we get that Uh, property tax levy details, um, is shown on the screen, and so I'll just, uh, highlight our general fund levy. That's our chief operating budget here at the city. It's funding our police services, our fire service, our public work services, um, parks and recreation amenities, and so when we provide those services to the community, if we respond to a fire call, we're not giving them a bill. We need to generate money to provide those services, um, and so we do that through property taxes. Um, secondly, then, we have, uh, our equipment levy. Uh, we're funding our, our squad replacement, our public works equipment, our parks equipment, and our fire equipment, um, in that levy. Our municipal building levy, uh, we have an internal loan here on this building. Uh, when we built this building back in two thousand and twelve, uh, we borrowed money from ourself, from our sewer operating fund and some of our other operating funds, and so we are paying back that to our sewer operating, uh, fund with that levy. Uh, the EDA levy, as you can see, that's fifty percent of last year's levy. Um, we're doing, uh, just fifty percent because we're dropping half of it down, uh, below our city levy and calling it that HRA levy. Um, and as we talked about, um, on the prior slide, we have that debt levy, so that is to pay our principal and interest payments that are due on the debt that we've, um, issued in the past. So in total, our city property tax levy that we're asking for your consideration tonight is twenty-five million, nine hundred ninety dollars, nine hundred ninety thousand, five hundred dollars, an increase of twelve point three nine percent. Uh, then we add on that HRA levy. The EDA has HRA levy powers here at the city, and so they've already adopted that preliminary levy, and they will hold a meeting on December third to adopt that final, uh, levy for that, uh, HRA levy. Uh, so combined levies is, uh, twenty-six million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, we're increase a twelve point nine eight percent. Uh, to put that in perspective, um, on an individual home, uh, we need to know what our city property tax rate is, and so our city property tax rate is comprised of two components, and the first is our property tax levy, and so that is what we talked about on the slide before. And then the second component is our tax capacity. Uh, here in Cottage Grove, our tax capacity, uh, it's a, a near, um, level increase, uh, from twenty twenty-four. Uh, if we were to look at a community that was fully developed, uh, we would see that those communities actually decreased in tax capacity about three percent because our existing properties dropped about three percent. We had growth from new construction, and so we're just under three-quarters of a percent increase between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Um, and so those two components, uh, that levy and the tax capacity, we get our city property tax rate, and for twenty twenty-five, we're looking at a thirty, thirty-seven point two one three percent. It's pretty consistent with what we saw in twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, city property taxes on the median home, and so we look, uh, in our community at that median home to see what the impact of our property tax levy is, and so that median home in Cottage Grove, uh, has a value of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, last year, uh, their, uh, property value is about three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, so a decrease of about two point eight nine percent, uh, based on that, uh, city property tax rate. They will pay one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars in city property taxes for twenty twenty-five. That's a dollar increase of about seventy-seven dollars. We did a financial management plan, uh, back at the beginning of twenty twenty-three, uh, to look at all the operating costs that are needed, uh, in the city for the next year, uh, ten years, um, our equipment replacement needs, uh, funding our pavement management program, funding our street reconstruction program, funding our equipment replacement. We put all those, um, into, um, our spreadsheets and our analysis, and we need about a hundred-dollar tax increase, uh, per year, um, to fund all those services that are needed in our community, so the seventy-seven dollars, um, is below that, what was identified, um, in our financial management plan, so we're within the parameters of that plan. Uh, knowing that not all properties in Cottage Grove act the same as the median home, they all don't, uh, some will increase, some will decrease in value from year to year, and the city, uh, tax rate still stays the same, and so they'll have different impacts, so we, uh, track, uh, four other, uh, properties in the city, and if we look at the average increase on these four properties and the median home, uh, we're about at an average we're about at an average of $112. And city council, I just want to also reflect back, when we started the process back in July, that median home, we thought would have to increase by about $108 for 2025. And so that increase is now down to that $77. One slide here to just let our residents know, on that median home, they're paying that $1,257 in city property tax annually. If they would instead send a check to the city or make a payment to the city on a monthly basis, much like they do their utility bill or their cable bill, they would send us a check for $104.75. We would then allocate it to our different departments. And so we would send public safety $45.05 to pay for our police and fire services. Public works would get $14.73 to pay for streets, snow plowing, forestry services. General government, which supports all the other city functions, whether it's through administration, payroll, HR, paying vendors, gets $13.65. Parks and recreation, to operate our parks, provide recreation amenities, is $10.90. Community development, $1.46, and why that is, they do building permits. So that's how they get the revenue to operate their department. Debt service, that $15.49. Capital equipment, $1.29. HRA and EDA levies are both 56 cents, and then budget contingency, $1.06. And so that's how we would divvy that out to our different departments. That $1,257 on the median home, we like to know how we compare to other communities, especially in Washington County. And so while we do not have their 2025 preliminary property tax levies at this point, we know how we compared in 2024. In 2024, we were second lowest on that median home at $1,177. And so at that $1,257, we still would be second from the bottom in city property taxes. I would caution you, that is based on all these other cities having a 0% property tax increase and a 0% tax capacity increase for 2025. We know that will not be the case, and so we feel that we will compare favorably once again. With that, I will take any questions from city council. Otherwise, your recommendation is on the screen.
All right, thank you, Brenda, and obviously thank you, staff. It's been a long, long road from the beginning. As you reminded me, it kind of technically started in January at our strategic planning workshop. So first of all, I guess I'll open it up for council. Is there any questions or comments that council wants to make for Brenda or staff at this point? Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Brenda and staff. As the mayor said, this was a very arduous and detailed process, as it is every year. But I want to compliment all the hard work on behalf of the department heads and obviously our city administrator in putting together such a strong budget that I think is extremely well-balanced with respect to continuing to provide the high level of city services that our residents have come to expect, while also making necessary investments in infrastructure, including, you know, trucks and squad cars and all of the various things that our team needs in order to do the job well. I want to just talk for a minute about the storm that just happened. So of course, we had kind of a double whammy. We had a Tuesday storm, and then just when people were getting their power back on, we had a Thursday storm. And if you've taken any time to look at some pictures or drive around town, that Thursday storm was a humdinger. It was tough. And when I think about a budget, I think about what are my values with respect to what our property owners, including me, because I pay taxes too, what do they deserve when we have an event like that? And what they deserve is, they deserve a community that is staffed appropriately, that has all of the right equipment, all of the right training and knowledge to be able to address residential concerns in a very quick manner and a very effective manner. And I've heard so many compliments, so many, from residents since last week about how fast we responded. And that includes the evening of the storm, actually, having the EOC set up here, you know, all of the calls coming into 911, having, I think it was close to 200, calls that our people had to address. None of that happens unless you plan for it. And that's how we budget here in the city of Cottage Grove, is we plan to make sure that we are good guardians of the public trust, which I think is reflected in the second lowest, you know, tax levy per capita in Washington County. And that's kind of where we've sat for a really long time. So definitely great value to the residents, but also just an unbelievable level of service. And I can't say thank you enough for the guidance that you all give us during the course of a budget conversation with regard to, you know, hey, we have a truck that probably isn't going to make it another year. We've maintained it for 15 years. We need to think about replacement. You know, looking ahead like that is what provides us that opportunity to respond in very short order when we have events like we had last week. You also mentioned the financial management plan. We've stuck to that thing. And the $77 versus the $100 estimate that we were trying to live within, that is one of the reasons we're a AAA bond-rated city, AAA. Cities of our size generally are not that, but we are. And it's because, again, we have a plan, we stick to the plan. We're very judicious when it comes to public funds, but we make certain that the things that need to be funded properly, and you saw on your, if everybody wrote a check slide, you know, what it costs to provide public safety services, public work services, et cetera. You know, you never want to skimp on those core functions of government. And obviously, the bond houses think that we're doing pretty well. So all in all, wonderful job this year. It's never easy. It won't be easy the next time. It wasn't easy last year. But I think we've done a really good job of kind of balancing out what our needs were and what we're looking at moving into the future as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson. Is there any other comments? Councilmember Garza?
Excuse me. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all of our staff. I appreciate all of the explanation, all of the, just making sure that I understand our budget and how all of the pieces of the pie work together. So I really appreciate taking the time so that I could really have an understanding of how things really work in our city. I'm very, very impressed with our city, to tell you. Being on this side of everything and learning all the things that I have, our city works really hard for our community, and they work really hard to make sure that we have a beautiful place to live in. So I just really want to say thank you all so much. It's been an amazing experience, and I'm so excited to learn more.
Thank you. Did I see Councilmember Thede? You want to mention something?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and say something. Everybody loves me at budget time because my dad raised me to be pretty frugal. And so, you know, it's sometimes, you know, and the thing is, trying to, trying to, you know, keep the services up and also the costs down. Because, you know, it seems like we all say, well, it only went up a little bit. But then if you had 10 things that go up a little bit, then that becomes a bigger bit. But, you know, so again, I would just like to commend the, all the employees in the city, especially the, you know, the management and everything else that work together. If you ever sat in on some of the budget meetings, we have some pretty good discussions at times. But everybody works together. There's give and take. And I think we should really kind of maybe send some of our videos and that up to maybe the state level or the federal level and show people how to, you know, even though we have some differing of opinions on things, how we do work together and, you know, make the best of whatever decisions are made and things of that nature. So, you know, again, it, you know, thanks for everything you guys do. And we really do have a nice community. And, well, I'd always like things to be lower cost, but, you know, we kind of took, you know, fine-tooth comb through it and, you know, tried to control it as much as possible. And one thing that Councilmember Olson said in terms of the AAA bond rating and so forth, that is very important for any type of debt costs and things like that. And they really do look at, you know, how much some of the changes and things and how finances are controlled. And again, it's not just being low and then, you know, being higher and lower and, you know, or low all the time. It's that steady steadiness and sure sign that, yes, we are looking at things. We're managing things, and Brenda and her team and everybody does a fantastic job at that, so.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Kamada?
I want to commend our different department heads on bringing forth to us the list of things they could do without. I know it's hard for them to choose their baby, you know, but that's part of our process is figuring out what we can postpone or what we can prolong the service life of in order to make our budget work. So as Brenda had said, we've been working on this since January, and there's been some sacrifices. So thank you to all of our staff.
Fantastic, yeah. And as I mentioned earlier, thank you, Brenda and your team and Jennifer and everybody else for all the conversations. By the way, also thank you for the updated list that you gave us of how other cities are looking out there from, the ones that we know of that are already going through the process of the preliminary property tax amounts that they're looking at. And there definitely is some much higher than ours. There is some lower than ours too. But what we try to do is, like we said, is to maintain a standard of service and process within our community that I think our community and our residents have come to enjoy. Yes, as we all know, we could look at certain things to reduce the cost. However, you know, maybe we don't plow as quickly. Or there's different things out there that we have come to become accustomed to in our community. And when we, at least from my standpoint, and I think the council up here, and when we talk to staff about some of these different options that happen, it's like, no. We're known for these things in our community that people count on the fact that when they get up in the morning and at a certain time, their streets are plowed or the roads are getting done, or if they call 911 and an emergency is happening in our community, that somebody is there. So I just wanted, again, thank you and everyone for providing that level of service out there that you have and obviously letting us continue to be one of the best cities out there in the state of Minnesota, frankly, so. All right, so with that, council, yes, Councilmember Kamada?
I'd like to make a motion if we're to that point.
Okay. Do you want to read it as it says on the screen?
Just wanted to make sure there was no further discussion before I made the motion.
Oh, I don't think there is. I think everybody's good. You want to make it?
I'd like to adopt Resolution 2024-127, adopting the proposed preliminary 2024 property tax levy, collectible in 2025, in the amount of $25,990,500.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kamada. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Again, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for that. All right, and now we are down to council comments and requests. And I get to go right back to you, Councilmember Kamada, if you have anything.
Yes, Charleston, I already touched on this, but in the aftermath of last week's storms, I have to give a sincere job well done to our fire and public safety crews and especially our public works crews with clearing that tree, the downed trees, the debris, and making sure that fire and EMS could get where they needed to go. And most importantly, and most thankfully, no serious injuries from either of those storms. So, yeah, they all deserve a job well done.
Thank you. I agree with you wholeheartedly. I'll have a little statement to make here in a little bit, but thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I will wait for the mayor's statement with regard to the storm cleanup, but I don't think we can say thank you enough. Couple of things I just wanted to mention. Earlier, I talked about the One Family Festival that took place this past weekend at Kingston Park. It was packed. It was more than packed. Luckily, I have a friend who lives near the park, and I could park in their driveway because there was nowhere to park. Streets were full, schools were full, parking lots were full. And of course, it was a wonderful event. I don't know the exact attendance, but I will tell you that it felt very Strawberry Fest-like. And certainly, we love to have that festival in our community twice a year. They come Memorial Day and they come Labor Day. So kudos to my friend John Yang for organizing another great festival. And thank you to Zach and his team for making sure the park was in absolutely pristine condition. It was awesome. You know, they use all those fields. And as we were walking around, we were hearing compliments about what a beautiful park and how well-maintained. It really was something to be admired. So please make sure your team knows that because I know it takes a lot of work. The cool thing about that One Family Festival is, you know, it really is a way for our Monk community to gain some exposure. And one of the things that we talked about when we were visiting that event was how our population of people of color here in the city of Cottage Grove, since I started as a city council member, since Myron started as the mayor, has virtually doubled. We're well over 20% now of our population that are people of color. And events like this that we feature, that this is a welcoming community for everybody and that we want everyone to be able to enjoy the services that we provide, the beautiful parks, all the rest of it, I think that speaks volumes about the kind of community that we are. So very neat to see that. I also wanted to just take a second and thank all the teachers and the staff and the bus drivers and custodians, administration, everybody else associated with back to school. Most of the kids went back yesterday. I know a few went back today. And those teachers and everybody else have been hard at it for a couple of weeks or more to make sure that the school was ready and that it was a welcoming experience. And they deserve a lot of credit for putting in the time, energy, and effort, especially when a lot of people are trying to take that last vacation of the summer, and they're actually in school working. But I know that the kickoff to the school year is always an exciting time. So very grateful for everybody, bus drivers, et cetera, who made it a great day for our kids either yesterday or today. And with that, mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, I'm going to keep going over here to Councilmember Thede.
Well, I was just going to mention that school is back in session and, you know, everybody be careful out there on the roads and drive with sanity and so forth and watch out and so that we have another successful school year.
Fantastic. Councilmember Garza?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Olson had mentioned about the One Festival, the One Family Festival. It was an amazing experience. There were thousands of people there. And what was most intriguing or interesting to me is when I spoke with the coordinator of it or the organizer of it, I asked if he was a resident of Cottage Grove, and he's not. He had visited our park and thought it was so beautiful and it was so well-maintained that they thought it was an ideal space for them to host this event. So I thought that was really impressive for them not to be from our community, but they chose that park, so.
And I do, I do want to add that Monique ate more than me and Tony combined, and she hadn't gained a pound, which is very frustrating, so.
Food is my thing.
Yeah, she went hungry. I don't think she left hungry, at least I hope not. But she definitely took advantage of the food trucks, for sure.
I'm looking forward to the 40 or 35-plus food truck.
Yeah.
I will be there.
Yeah, she might need like a punch card or something. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
All right, so believe it or not, I have a few things for the public. But I think what I'll do is, first, I just want to kind of read, I'll say, a statement of appreciation. So first of all, just for the publics to be, you're already aware, but last Thursday night, during a very strong thunderstorm, the city of Cottage Grove experienced a significant downburst of surface winds that caused widespread damage. Numerous trees were uprooted or snapped, and many were blocking roads and downed power lines. And we had several homes that were damaged in our community, over 12, actually. Thankfully, and I mean that sincerely, thankfully, no deaths or injuries occurred as a result of the storm. Our public safety and public works department quickly became overwhelmed with the calls for service. The decision was then made to activate our emergency operations center, as we call it, the EOC, to coordinate the city's response to this emergency. the EOC, to coordinate the city's response to this emergency. City staff from all departments responded to work in the EOC to prioritize needs and resources, and to collaborate with external partners like Excel Energy to expedite power restoration efforts. I want to personally thank the many agencies who responded to assist Cottage Grove Public Safety with handling numerous 911 calls for, for police, fire, and EMS services, and for assisting Public Works with setting up barricades to protect the public from downed power lines and removing trees and limbs to clear blocked roads. I also want to mention that we did receive support from the Washington County Sheriff's Office, including their emergency management supervisor and their public works department from the, from the county, Washington County. And then from Woodbury's Police, Fire, and EMS departments also helped us, and also from Newport and St. Paul Park, and Lake Elmo Fire Departments came into our community to support what was going on that evening. In addition, Public Works has and is continuing to receive assistance from the cities of Burnsville, Eagan, Newport, and West St. Paul, all of their public works departments with debris management and cleanup efforts. So the fact that we're getting a lot of this, these downed trees moved out of the boulevards or the streets and such, frankly, is, the reason we're able to do it as quickly as we are is because we're getting this teamwork that is happening from other cities as part of our declaration of an emergency, as well as mutual aid. So when they have their issues, unfortunately, when they do, we go to their help, and we aid those communities and the county, and when we have our needs, they come in and support us. And I just also want to say we cannot overlook the importance, frankly, of people helping people when emergencies like this do affect our community. To all those agencies who provide us with personnel and equipment, and to all the citizens of Cottage Grove who are out in their neighborhoods, helping those impacted by last week's storm, I just want to give my heartfelt thank you to all of you, and I know the council does too, I think I've been hearing that very clearly. I will just share on a, on a separate note, real quick on that, that when I got, when I got the call from Ryan, actually, my house, where I live in Cottage Grove, I think had a single branch that went down, nothing major, but Ryan called me and said, our public works director said, hey, we, we have some serious damage on the other side of the highway. So me being Myron and me being the mayor, I hopped in my car and went over there, and frankly, was blown away, no pun intended, by how bad some of the damage was. I was trying to go down streets, wasn't able to do it. There was a couple of locations, one particular home in particular, where the, the tree literally went through the house, and thank goodness, those, that couple, elderly couple was not home, because I'm certain if they would have been, based on the way that tree went through that house, that they would not be with us today. But myself, along with the neighbors there, I pulled over, I had my 911 call ready to go, because I thought if we were going to have to go into that house and find them, we were going to need help. But the neighbor and I, along with other people that were stopping to run up there to make sure no one was injured, was quite remarkable. Ironically, where you live, I was just down the street from you, I just happen to know who one person was there, Barnharts, on the corner there, and the house that had the power lines come down just down the street from you, onto, they were in their garage when the tree went down on their garage. Luckily, it didn't collapse the garage, but that's what I was trying to do, was I wanted to get out, just like our public works crew, like our parks department, our public safety department, everybody was trying to make sure that we can get in there. And matter of fact, I also wanted to throw this out there, that many of our employees do, that work at Public Works were, in essence, trapped in their neighborhoods because there were so many trees down. And so I know we were sending to a location to get them to walk to a location, to get on a, a public works vehicle, to get to Public Works, to get the equipment to start removing trees. So just an amazing response. It's not one that we want to have to deal with, but when I walked into the EOC center after doing some touring and checking on people on the other side of the highway specifically, all professional process, you guys have tried this before, you've practiced it, and it was amazing to watch our staff reacting as quickly as they did to all of the, the storms and such that, that happened on that, on that Thursday. So, you know, hats off to our citizens, hats off, and thank you to all those corresponding agencies that came to support our community, and do absolutely appreciate everything that they did. Couple other general items for you, one is I do need to mention, from a legality standpoint, that after the last council meeting, we did have a closed workshop, look, our attorney's laughing because she thought maybe I forgot. We had a workshop that was closed to the public, it was a performance review check-in with our city administrator, Jennifer Lovett, and just, it was a very good check-in and no real issues or concerns. It was a great opportunity for us to share thoughts and ideas on, you know, whether it's things that are relative to budgeting, or staff, or personnel, or whatever. So very good, and I think council would agree, that it was a very good opportunity to go through a performance review. And then because we are not, earlier in this meeting, during the consent calendar, we are not going to have a second meeting in September for the city council, and so because of that, our next meeting won't be until October. And so I did want to point out three quick things that are on our calendar for the rest of the month for the public. First of all, there is going to be a workshop, or I'm sorry, an open house, I apologize, open house on Tuesday, September 24th, at the Cottage Grove Middle School from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And you might be wondering, what is that about? It is to get feedback and communication with the public on the 80th Street, Keats Avenue Future Roundabout that they're proposing on 80th and Keats. So if you have some feedback or want to talk through that, or see what the, the designs look like, feel free to stop on September 24th from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Cottage Grove Middle School. We also, on September 16th, we do have a public safety open house that we want to bring to your attention. It is at the Hero Center, right next door here. And again, if you want to see the Hero Center, which is amazing, training facility, all the bells and whistles, all the different things that we have from a public safety department, feel free to stop in, it is free and open to the public. And then my last point is still related to public safety, and it is a Friday, September 20th is, our public safety board is, is having a golf tournament. It is on Friday, it's at River Oaks Golf Course, the check-in is at 7:00 a.m. If you're interested, we are looking, or they're looking, I should say, for golfers, foursomes, even if you don't have a foursome, if you want to come golf, we can work to put groups together. This is a great opportunity, all the funding, all the proceeds that they gain from that is going back into supporting our police, fire, EMS programs, everything from things they've done in the past, which is helping us purchase our canines, vests, you name it, public safety, or fire apparatus, equipment, things like that, that's what this money goes towards. So whether you want to sponsor a hole, or whether you want to golf, or maybe you just want to, you know, send a check to the public safety board, feel free, any way, shape, or form, but all that money does go directly back to support our public safety department. So with that, those are my comments, since, again, we don't have a second meeting this month, so this time I'm the one that took the longest, so I apologize. But with that being said, the next items are workshop, which is open to public, we do not have this evening, and we do not have a workshop that is closed to the public. So we're all the way down to 15, which is motion adjourned. We have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Kamada. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.